I think we're gonna start the meeting. Seven among the shush. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so this is a school committee meeting for October 19th, 2017. And the meeting is being recorded, so if you can silence your phones, et cetera, that would be great. I'll start with a public comment. Alright, seeing none, then we're gonna start with recognition. And what we have, we have as many people as we could get tonight here who are going to be on the Superintendent Search Advisory Committee. And we have Joyce Bradshaw, our town clerk, here to swear in the committee members.
Everybody just stand and raise your hand.
Do we have to do it too? Oh, sure, I can, sorry, I don't know. I haven't met everyone in person, so, well, they can still stand if you want, I know that some are missing, but, um...
Okay, that's fine.
So I am Amy Mabley, Holly Witski Lynch, Cheryl Barzac. There's Cheryl, standing, Ann Bate, Mary Lou Connors, Frank Kneely, Ryan Landry, could not be here tonight, but he, I will make sure he knows to swing by and see you. Kate Lobal. Lobal is gonna, okay, Laura McMillan, Marty McKay Perry, Ellen Peters. Alright, Chris Phillips, Dan Rassenin, Allison Trundy. Okay, so, um, those are all the people who are here. And, is that acceptable? Let's, uh, go ahead.
Alright, if you'd all stand and represent your identity. I, after you state your name.
I, Amy Mabley.
solemnly promise and affirm that I will faithfully, honestly, sincerely, and impartially perform all the duties that are incumbent upon me as a member of the Superintendent Search Advisory Committee, so help me God.
We're supposed to say that?
I do have some...
Paperwork?
Yes.
That we do?
Can we read it?
The paperwork?
I can't remember all the stuff you just said, I can repeat it now.
Oh, yes. I, and after you state your name, solemnly promise and affirm
Solemnly promise and affirm.
that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
honestly
Honestly
sincerely
Sincerely
and impartially
And impartially
perform all the duties
Perform all the duties
that are incumbent
That are incumbent
upon me
Upon me
as a member
As a member
of the Superintendent Search Advisory Committee.
Of the Superintendent Search Advisory Committee.
Oh, help me God. Awesome, thank you all. So I just have paperwork, and if you want to just, um, this is just information required by the open meeting law that you've been sworn in, and you have received these documents, so everybody, I put names on them. So if you want to just grab the one that pertains to you and just sign the two top sheets. This is just indicating that you've received these documents, and the second one is for the open meeting law. And you can just return the top two sheets to me, you can keep the rest, you know, there are...
Oh, I got two.
You have two, oh, well, that could have been, okay, just...
That's lucky.
Just lucky.
Um, so you want to come up and sign here?
Perfect, thank you very much.
Joyce, can you go?
Oh, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Maybe just something else?
Hold on, do we get it?
Sure, I can get a photo, let me get a photo.
We could put that up.
It'll be, uh...
You guys have homework?
Yeah, I get a photo.
You have to take home this information. Remember I said verbatim? Yes, very much, perfect.
Because your hair looks so nice tonight, come on. Here we go. Get in the photo, get in the photo. You're the best. Alright.
Hold on, I gotta get in the middle.
Wow, I didn't put this in the timeline. I'm sorry, we'll be quick. Alright, smile.
Anybody that's not here, I can make arrangements. And we go. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming out. Yeah, here we have the sign also?
Yes, please, yep, sign, perfect, thank you. We just stapled them together after we done.
Those are my key for us?
And keep those, and just...
This is my extra Amy?
That's your extra Amy, right?
And everybody else got their shot?
Perfect, wonderful, thank you. So much for our paperless society. Wonderful, thank you so much. And I have to thank you all for doing this.
Thank you all, yes, that's right. And the first meeting is next Tuesday, I will be sending you some information. And it's posted publicly as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yes, as they run. Okay, great. Next, we have our student report. We can wait till Joyce is all set. We have Liam O'Carroll and Caitlin Dolly, our student representatives, can come on up.
I have nothing to say, nothing to say. Thank you for everything all of you do, I agree.
Thanks for keeping it happening, Joyce. Alright.
Hi, so, um, for, at the high school, going ons is, last week was Spirit Week, uh, which is our big lead-up to the homecoming game, and we did dress-ups every day that week. So we had tie-dye Tuesday, pajama day Wednesday, America Day Thursday, and then class colors on Friday. And that leads up to our big spirit rally, which is, takes place at the end of the day on Friday. And we had a huge rally, a bunch of events, we did a potato sack race, we had tug-of-war, we did decorated teacher, all timed, all with a point system for each class. And that all culminates to one class, usually the seniors, uh, which happened again this year, the seniors won.
Is it triple points for seniors?
No, but it is a lot of points for teacher dress-ups, if teachers dress up on that last day, that's who wins it.
Ah, nice.
Is that a little rigged?
It seems to always feel a little rigged.
It's not, I can, I can attest to, it's not rigged.
Teachers, if teachers are gonna dress up for a class, they're more inclined to dress up for the seniors.
Be present, I wonder.
It's not rigged. But, um, so that was really successful, it was one of the closest ones we've had so far, um, and it was probably the most involved than any class has been, there was some real back-and-forth between seniors and juniors. And Mr. Jackson even came to us and talked about how, like, raised level it was, and how successful it was, and I think, for the most part, we agreed it was the most successful Spirit Week we've had so far, so...
That's great. I was personally worried, because the sophomores were killing it, and I was like, gosh, are we gonna lose? But the juniors pulled through in the end, so...
That's good.
Pretty fantastic week, and that all led up to the homecoming game, which was a complete blowout, thirty-five to seven, over Drakehead. Fantastic game, that night, and then the homecoming dance, that night happened, really successful, very profitable, uh, no major incidents, so, uh... And we had three, um, homecoming ultimate scarlet nights, we're calling them, which were Will Jordan, David Chidoni, and Christina Flurry. And they were voted by all, everyone present at homecoming, so...
And then, in addition to Spirit Week, band had a competition, Nezba, and they placed third. In addition, um, we had today, actually, we had a wear purple for LGBTQ rights, and there was a pretty good turn-up, so that was really nice to see everyone in support of the community. Um, we also had the first-ever club fair during lunch, and I'd say it was really good for being, um, the first-ever trial run, and I think there are definitely some kinks, but I think we'll work through them, and it'll keep getting better year after year. And then, also, for upcoming events, tomorrow we have a unified basketball jamboree to kick off the game for the unified basketball, it's at three fifteen. It's free to attend, and if you're in attendance, you can actually get the chance to win free Celtics tickets, which is a pretty nice little deal in addition to supporting our athletes. And then, also, later, coming up in the month of November, on the tenth and eleventh, the Drama Guild is hosting a festival for one-act plays, it's called Shorts Fest, and it's really cool, because the kids direct, and get costumes and props, and all act in it, so it's completely student-run. I, myself, am directing a play, and it's just, it's really awesome to see them all come together, so...
Fantastic. Very good.
Oh, and also, do you want to take it? So, a North Andover athlete, Kate Chevers, was featured on the Channel Five High Five segment for, um, playing soccer and lacrosse with cystic fibrosis, and kind of how she overcomes the difficulties, and kind of how she continues to push through it because of her love of the sport. And it was just really cool to kind of hear her story, so...
Yeah, it was broadcast tonight at six o'clock, too, yeah, that's great.
The blow-up dragon was pretty cool.
It was amazing, yeah.
The sophomores, right?
I didn't see that coming.
It was the freshmen.
It was the freshmen, they had a massive blow-up dragon.
They also had a minion.
And it said, freshmen are on fire.
That's pretty impressive.
Which was meant to be a positive thing.
I only tweeted.
Yeah, so did I, but I didn't tweet out a picture, but just in case.
I have a quick question, um, so it's the middle of the first trimester, so you're a sixth of the way through the year.
Does anything academically special happen at mid-trimester, or do you just click along until...
I know certain classes, like, uh, chemistry has a midterm that they do, and a lot of, I know that, based on the curriculum, they try to schedule one or test around this time, but we don't specifically have mid-terms. We are, we do, but because we have three finals throughout the year, I think that sort of bounces out, in terms of, so, yeah.
Great.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you being here.
Great report. Thanks.
So, um, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
First item is, oh, are our people here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, Marty's, Marty's making it happen.
I invited water, sent something I'm gonna read, too, so...
Okay, so we first have, um, a very important donation from the PTOs for the model classrooms, invite Marty McKay Perry to come up. Represent the crew. Can you give it to Jen?
I'll take it. Thank you so much, you're welcome.
Alright. And you can go sit at the microphone
Yes.
Talk some more.
So, the donation that I just gave her, where it was the second half of Franklin PTO, um, it was for the model classrooms, which is an initiative that the town took over, um, and asked the PTOs to help fund for each classroom in all the elementary schools. So that was our, last of our donation for our school, and I know that, um, some other schools have already submitted, and now everybody in town and the elementary schools has everything they needed to have a model classroom.
Yeah, it's exciting, so, um, you know, this was an initiative we launched last year in combination with all the PTOs. Um, we have all of our classrooms, first through twelfth grade, outfitted with a mounted projector, a document camera, and a way for a computer to connect to those. And I think it's really just become, as I described it, if you remember, I said, it's just like, it's like bricks and mortar, like, you need this in a classroom, and it's really fun to walk around the district and just see that people have come to expect them as teaching tools across the district. And, um, you know, the PTOs have been so generous, this year the total donation is twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents, and, um, you know, all the PTOs, uh, have been based on what, A, they can afford, and B, what we have been able to install in their schools. Uh, and I think the best part for me around the PTOs is everyone understood, everyone was doing their best, and so if one school gave a little more than the other, so be it, we need to have every classroom outfitted. Um, and I, I would say a few PTOs, for instance, the ECC PTO, we have asked not to contribute, because we're gonna ask them to contribute to the ECC classrooms for next year, if they can support us. So, you know, it's just been a great and very collaborative effort, I would say, we've all really kind of rolled up our sleeves together and done it, and, uh, it's pretty amazing that in a fourteen-month period, we have gotten classrooms that were very behind technologically to be where they should be, frankly. And, uh, I'm very excited about it, and at this point, now it's just maintenance, so the school district will take it over completely, there'll be no more requests from the PTOs, and I just really appreciate that everyone kind of got behind it.
As a parent, I appreciate having that in my kids' classrooms.
Yeah, right. So, it's been great, and actually going to the open houses and seeing, most of the teachers presented their, um, information on open house night using all the equipment, which is a good thing to see, but, uh, yeah, it's great.
Heidi wrote, I just wanted to reach out to both of you, that was to Mike and me, uh, personally, with, while I said it last year, I want to again thank you for making the model classrooms happen with such a short, within such a short period of time. The students especially love it, and we've received positive feedback from the teachers, it was used in many of the classrooms at my kids' open houses, they're in all three schools now, so... We are seeing that it's just part of the fabric, now, especially with the Chromebooks, too, it just makes an incredibly, um, rich learning environment. So, thank you, and as we have been very clear about, the money raised today that is being donated, we obviously have spent all the money on the model classrooms, um, and what this now means is that we're about to go out and buy twenty-three thousand dollars more worth of Chromebooks. Because what we did was not buy the Chromebooks until this came back, got those installed this summer, and now we'll go out and buy, uh, more Chromebooks.
That's awesome.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, thank you to all the, um...
Thank you.
Thanks for staying to present.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, the school committee vote to accept the donation of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents from the Franklin Kittredge, Sargent, and Thompson PTOs to be used for installation of model classrooms and/or by Chromebooks.
Well, backfilling model classrooms.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Mr. McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Five-zero, thank you, that is very exciting stuff. Um, next, we have, um, minutes, I think there are two sets, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Two sets of minutes. Here to approve, I'll take the first one first, October fifth, twenty seventeen. Happy to have a motion on that. One sec. Motion by Ms. Witski Lynch, second by Ms. Picard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, and then the October twelfth, twenty seventeen minutes.
I'll move to accept those as well.
Thank you. Second. And Mr. McDevitt, okay, so Holly Witski Lynch and Andrew McDevitt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five-zero, great, thank you. Um, next is the chair's report. Uh, the key thing that I have is, um, and this came up last week when we talked, is, our next meeting is scheduled for November second, which is a pretty important day for, um, the master plan public forum is at six-thirty at the, um, high school cafeteria, and obviously, people in the community are encouraged to participate in that ourselves as well. Dr. Price is going to be at Nature's classroom with the middle school that day, so she is not available at all.
Woo-hoo!
That's a pretty important trip for you. So, there's kind of a two-part question, one would be, do we have an earlier start at five or five-thirty? Or do we cancel that meeting and reschedule it later in the month, which I think we'll see on some timelines for the Superintendent Search, might make more sense. But we can have a meeting if we want to on this November second, I just would like us to start earlier, if you want to discuss that.
What would be your recommendation for, what was your recommendation?
Well, there are two, and you'll see in a minute when we talk about some other things, there are two dates that we could put in place instead, so we have, we could either have a second meeting on, um, adding November thirtieth, which is currently not a meeting date, or, um, we could add one in December. Or, um, we can keep it and just go earlier, but it would just, it would not, we'd not have Dr. Price, and we'd have to start earlier.
So I'm just double-checking my calendar, we have the second and the sixteenth?
Right.
Right.
Okay, somehow I don't have the sixteenth here, then I'd be in favor of moving the second to the thirtieth, because I think based upon the search...
It would be useful to have.
Yes.
Would it be useful to have?
It would be useful to have it, and if we could maybe make a motion to just reschedule it, and then, in a later discussion, pick which date. Because there are some dates to look at, um, for a couple timeline scenarios for the search.
So you're just asking for a motion to move it, but not make a date specific right now?
Or why don't we say, why don't we, or make it to cancel the meeting that night, and then we can add a new one.
I moved to cancel the meeting for November second, how's that?
A second?
Or postpone it, how's that?
Or you could call it, maybe postpone, sure, so motion to postpone the meeting, that's currently scheduled for November second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by David Trissey, second by Andrew McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Reimposed, okay. So November second, um, we are going to postpone that and reschedule it, and we will determine that shortly, um, this evening for sure. Thank you for that. Um, that was all I had for, um, a chair's report at this point. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, um, a lot of exciting work being done, yesterday we had a really good PD session across the district, Mr. Gilligan, you want to give a quick update on that?
Yeah, I mean, it was tremendous across the district, with the middle school focusing on SEL, uh, social emotional learning, and then they started to really dig into some, um, units and data. And what was particularly great yesterday was the collaboration of all grade-level teachers across K through five, working on Eureka, and that including the teaching, teaching assistants, as well as all the special educators. So we made some really good progress with that yesterday.
Anything to add, Dr. Strachan?
Yes, we also brought in attorney Mike Joyce to present on 504 process. Part of our initiative under SEL is to really get across the district in the same direction, understanding of what's required of 504, so we did a huge training on that piece of it, which included all of the guidance counselors, the nursing staff, um, the school psychologists, uh, lots of the administrators, so that everyone has a good understanding of, you know, what they need to do in that area.
And Ms. Wahlberg, yesterday, you want to come up and explain the conference you were at, is, I'm very, you know, something we've been working on, but something that we purposely made sure we included in our strategic plan, so, uh, Ms. Wahlberg represented us yesterday at a conference, so...
So I was at a conference called the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, and we discussed, um, we're like many other towns, and Andover was there, um, just to give you some context, most of the towns that are involved, the school districts that are involved are Metco town, Metco school districts, and we are not. However, we are all facing the same shortage in hiring teachers that represent the changing demographic in our, in our district, so, we kind of brainstormed, and I'm hoping that we can actually become a member of that, um, group, and certainly, there's recruitment fair, I believe it's in March. So we need to start looking at what we're going to have open, especially with the new kindergarten coming in, um, any vacancies that we're gonna be having, and I hope to be able to attend that recruitment fair and, and kind of get us out there, at the very least, and get a little bit of momentum on that, so...
Great, that's great.
Um, and just, you know, one story, I have such a privilege of being able to go around and see schools, and I just had a great story from this week that I thought I would share with you guys, so, um, last year, as you may or may not remember, we, um, got rid of a substantially separate program over at Franklin, and we pushed students back into their neighborhood schools with the behavior technicians, so, students who needed additional support, many kids, um, somewhere on the autism Asperger's spectrum, and, uh... So there were three students last year at, at particular elementary school and one kindergarten, kids who have all, would all have gone to Franklin, would have, uh, this was not Franklin, so it would have been, um, not going to their neighborhood school, and, uh, I, uh, asked the principal, how are the kids doing this year? And, uh, two out of the three kids have seamlessly integrated into first grade this year. One kid needed to go to a substantially separate program at Sergeant, based on, on his needs, but the thing that's so exciting for me is that those two kids would have been in substantially separate programs, starting at five years old. And the changes that we've been able to make as a district have allowed them to be going to their neighborhood school with minimal support in a regular first-grade class, and, uh, you know, we talk about inclusion, and we talk about all the changes we're making, and we look at all these numbers, um, but that's really when it becomes powerful for me, is when I see, um, changes in policy, being able to change kids' trajectories. And I just wanted to give you that update, because it was heartwarming.
You went to see them in their classroom?
Yeah, that's great. And I saw them last year as kindergartners, with a BT, and doing excellent work, and at this point, um, they're getting, they're getting minimal support, and they're doing well in first grade, and, um, you know, that gives them the trajectory here within our schools for the, for the next eleven years.
Absolutely, and an important component of that work is having the board-certified behavior analyst, who's working across the district and training our behavior technicians. And the other piece that's happening is, our BCBA is pushing into the classrooms to work with teachers as well, doing consultations, um, doing some modeling, um, to help provide the assistance, because it's one thing to have an aide who's, you know, working with the student and helping them along, but then to have the other people within the classroom, the classroom teacher, have an understanding of what's happening, and how to interact and understand the behavior constructs and the approach to take. So, really, I'm just thrilled at how everyone is really embracing this and moving forward, and actually asking and seeking some additional supports and trainings in those areas, so it's very positive.
It's just cool to see, so...
It's very cool.
Thought I'd share that, that's it?
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Trissey, do you have any new updates? I know you've been...
Getting lots of updates from you on the school building committee?
Very briefly, uh, Madam Chair, we met last night, the school building committee met last night for a couple hours here, um, did a deep dive on the site, um, the site plan, our engineer, T, uh, engineering firm, TEC, um, have started to really take a deep dive on the, uh, short-term and long-term solutions for parking, as well as traffic flow. As we all know, it's a very complicated site, lot going on up there, but, um, I feel like we're making some very good progress. I know the superintendent has brought in a lot of input from teachers and administrators from all three of those schools that see the problems there, day in and day out. I think it's, we all know that, e- even if we weren't doing this school, we had a, a traffic problem out there, so, there's a lot of moving parts up there, but I, I feel very good that we're, you know, gonna solve that problem. The bid documents are very close to being complete, we will vote on them next Wednesday, we have another school building committee next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, um, and the timeline still looks good, we hope to, um, post the bid on November first. There'll be a, um, a site walkthrough for potential bidders, um, that following Friday, the third, and then two weeks later, uh, bids will be due at Town Hall by ten AM on the seventeenth of November, and, uh, you know, God willing, we'll, uh, have a GC ready to build the school.
And if people are anxious that nothing is happening, you can drive by tonight and see the large boring machine, not that it's boring, but the boring go-gown, um, we did some boring today, in terms of testing the soil to see what we need to do around the foundation, so, if anyone actually wants to believe this is happening, although they're not seeing anything happen, drive by this evening, the boring machine is there.
I bet the ECC kids like saying...
They did. And they're well-operated by a remote control, so Mary Lou got to do it.
Really?
It's pretty cool.
Wow.
Other duties as assigned.
As other, other duties as assigned, or taken, she was pretty excited about it herself.
That's fantastic. Great. Thank you, Mr. Trissey, that's excellent. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to all business, um, so the first thing is to continue discussion about our Superintendent Search, uh, we had our committee sworn in, um, and at five o'clock today, we closed the, um, application window for internal candidates. Ms. Wahlberg, do you have an update for us?
At five o'clock, there was one candidate.
Anyone good?
Please, Mr. Gilligan, yes.
I wanted to let you know that I am that applicant, and I look forward to engaging in an open and transparent process, and in whatever process that this committee thinks is most beneficial to the town of North Andover and our community. I believe I'm a competitive candidate, uh, for this important position, and I believe I have the skills to move this district forward, and I wanted you to know, that I was that one candidate, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilligan.
We, we might have assumed.
It's good to make it, make it clear, so, um, thank you very much. So as we discussed last time, if there was one or fewer, we are going to then move to tomorrow, open the, um, search to, um, public, or, open search. So, um, and we talked about, there were some timelines, so I kind of... So, and we talked about there were some timelines, so I kind of, at five o'clock put together a little document if you want to look at this. Let me get one down to Carrie too. Okay, and I know Jim is posting it for me. I'm sorry if it looks complicated, but I was trying to get everything into one thing. So the actions column, the column B is actions and then the dates work across off of that. So originally proposed that if we were to leave the position open for two weeks, the posting open for two weeks. That's column A and then three weeks are more scenarios because we do have a Thanksgiving window to consider. So I'll just run through this basically and then we can discuss if that's all right with you all. So if we post the position tomorrow, that's steady across the board. And if we closed it in two weeks, that would be November third. The subcommittee would have three days to look at the applications through the AppleTrak system and then the committee would get together on eleven, these are the dates I'm proposing, on eleven nine. To discuss and select who we want to interview. And then the interviews would be held from the thirteenth to the fifteenth. And then make a recommendation to this group at our meeting on the sixteenth. So we could then have public interviews for the finalists by the seventh. And then at our twenty, meeting on the twenty first, we'd be able to hopefully announce that we had someone that we were interested in putting forward.
So very quickly, can I just clarify?
Yes.
Between the fifteenth and the sixteenth. I'm assuming you would have to notify candidates that they would be presented. And they would have to then say whether or not they want it to be pub, made public.
Okay, that's a good note.
You can't assume that they do.
Right, okay.
Right. We, we actually lost one candidate last year.
Okay.
Not last year.
Every, every.
Feels like last year.
Every superintendent search, many, many superintendent searches lose the ball at that juncture.
Okay, thank you. I'll write that down, okay. So that's a two-week open window situation. For three weeks.
Can I ask another question? So in terms of public interviews of, of the candidates.
Right.
Last year or three years ago, I keep saying last year. We had basically days where we had you come out for pretty much an entire day.
It was all of us on the same day.
Was it all, oh, that's right, because we had this circular, yes, yes. Don't let anyone see, like, you know.
We saw each other.
Yes, I know. But our plan was that you wouldn't.
And there'd leadership people with each person, right?
Right, and we also did site visits as well. So I don't see that here.
I would probably, it would have to be on that day.
So the site visits, I think you did af, was it after or before?
No, it was.
Before, okay.
It was sort of the day before.
The day before.
You guys were announced on a Monday, site visit was on Tuesday, and you guys come on Wednesday for?
Site visits were three separate days.
Yeah.
Wow.
To the places.
To our places. No, when, like when people came to Newton North.
Right. Awesome. And then Hudson, we had three separate days that we did that.
Yeah, I think that was the week before because I had three districts interviewing.
Whatever it was, it was, it was jam, it was jam packed.
It looks like.
But we have.
We have time between sixteen.
I didn't, I didn't actually.
You do have a lot of time. You, you have a lot more time built in here. A lot more time built in.
I think that's helpful, okay. Site visit. And by site visits, you mean going to see the people where they currently work?
Yeah, we met with, well, I mean for Dr. Price, I mean she was at the, the high school in Newton North. So we had school committee members come in, we had teachers, we had parents. I don't.
Kids, my leadership team.
I, I, yeah, the superintendent came in. I think somebody from the city council came in.
Yep.
I do remember some students. I, I think pretty much kind of everybody has a little bit of the same feel. But I mean, it was, it was probably four, five hours. I mean, it was, it was a good day.
And you still refer to that. We told, they told us, they told us.
It was good.
Yeah.
Right, so but we would have time.
Is that the same for every candidate?
Yeah.
So the, the candidate set up the visit for you. So you say, we're going to come out and visit your site, you know, what day is convenient for you. And then the candidate, you know, brings through, you know, a series of people for you to meet with.
Yeah, we didn't really move very much. Most places.
They came to you.
They kind of came to us.
Right, they, they brought them to you.
Yeah, there was one.
I don't want to call it a dog and pony show, but.
Yeah, there was one district we went to, we went to see, because of their structure, we went to see elementary, then we saw the office and we saw the high school. I remember that specifically. And then the others, one of the others I was walking distance. With you, it was, we just stayed at the high school. Everybody came to us.
Yeah.
So it varied.
I think we need to discuss that when I get to that point. I mean, we got to build in the time and I think you have built in time for it.
Looks like we have the time here because there's a huge gap because that's Thanksgiving week and then that whole week before the, the seventh is, is a good amount of time.
You've built in a lot more time than the last search did.
Could we possibly, on the third?
Yep.
Could the committee then start reviewing the applications? As opposed to just having the sixth to the eighth review? Could they have the third to the eighth?
Yeah, they could. Actually, that's true. It could be open immediately. That's a good point. I was looking at Monday through Friday, but you're absolutely right. So the committee would be able to, from the time it closes on the third, which I'm, if we did it for the two weeks, then from five PM on the third, that's a good point, through the eighth, they'd have a chance to look and take their notes and, and all of that. Because I know that, I, I've done that for, not for superintendent but for principal and it is, it does take a long time to read all the documents.
If you're reading all the references and recommendations.
A lot of material.
Right, so but that's, that's a very helpful point as well. So that's a two-week window. If we were to leave the application open for three weeks. It gets a little more jammed up again because of Thanksgiving and because the end point, if we just went straight up in column C. To give some of the time that we're talking about here, we'd have the public interviews on Thursday, the twenty first of December.
Can we work backwards for a second though?
Yeah.
For a second? I mean, you have, firstly, you have a two-week window between the, the public interviews with the candidates here with us and then we vote. That, that seems like a, a big, big gap. That, I know last time, I, I don't think we're going to need that kind of gap for two, two weeks to talk about it.
Mm-hmm.
But if the, if the deadline or, actually I'd like to hear Ms. Wahlberg's thoughts on this. Is there something special besides we're having a meeting on the twenty first?
That's the only reason.
So there's nothing special with that day?
I was just going with the column, the two weeks, it's basically existing meetings and that's why I do propose that we could pop a meeting into a couple, there are a couple options that would help close that a little bit.
My, my feeling is we shouldn't be, you know, burdened by, by our committed schedule right now, first of all.
Yes, so that's kind of why I wanted to talk about this.
I don't think the committee's going to need two weeks to, you know, contemplate that. I know last.
Agreed. It was just based on scheduled meetings.
There's time there. I, I think working off this December twenty first.
Announcement date?
Announcement date is probably a better way to look at it than.
And go backwards.
You could build in more time if you, if the subcommittees need to do more work, because that part seems jammed to me.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you, you could change those dates and then build in more time later on in December, I would say.
That's why I, I really, looking at D and E, I would like to add a meeting either on the eleven thirty or on twelve fourteen.
Would we want to add them both days and then we can cancel if we don't need it?
The same thing, just for planning purposes, it'd be helpful to gain that time back. But because if we're, if we're moving along, we've done site visits, we've had people come out here, interview.
Right.
I mean, last year it, or three years ago. Last time. I mean, it was pretty apparent the direction we wanted to go and I don't, I don't see us needing to wait.
Right.
Two weeks to kind of go through all that.
But I think we all agree, we don't want to wait until January to do it.
No.
I think that would be a really miserable holiday season for people.
I wanted to show you that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, for us and for candidates. It's just going to be really tough.
No, it's, it's a horrible time of year to be having a head.
We already established that two weeks was enough time to open.
Right. Well, I just want to make sure people agree with that though.
Because some people.
Is there an opinion that?
It's been, it's been on average that we've done it for about two weeks. We could go three weeks, but then it's pushing the whole process back. And if we're looking, if our goal is to get it done before the winter holiday break, then if we have those other meetings in built-in time. Like I said last week, people know that this vacancy is coming up and they are completely ready to, you know, push the button. They, all they have to do is fill everything out and hit send. So the qualified candidates who are interested in us are probably going to be there within two weeks.
And I think too, if the, if the subcommittee were to look at whatever applications come in and go, geez, we don't have any candidates that we think are worth having primary interviews with. Then they could come back to us and say, hey, we need to open this for a longer search. I can't imagine that's going to happen, but, I mean, you all will meet on the.
I don't want to start with that precedent though.
Okay.
It's a two-week period.
Okay.
And there is an end date.
I would say make it three weeks then. If that, if that's a concern, I, I'd say.
I don't think it's a concern, David.
You have plenty of time. If, if you want to get someone in before Christmas, there, there's so much more time. I don't think our time's going to take a lot. I don't think we're going to have to do a lot of, I mean, the, the search committee's going to have to do the most work, the, the one that was appointed.
Right, and, and, and that's, and the reason why adding meetings makes sense is because that Thanksgiving, with a three-week open application window, the Thanksgiving thing comes at the totally worst moment. And so we're going to need to add more time after that. So if we went with three weeks, I think we just need to add in at least one more meeting to make it work out appropriately.
I mean, our meeting though? Why do we need a meeting? The, the, I, I'm just saying that the tenth, if you, if you had the deadline, applications are due by the tenth. And they can do their work between the tenth and the, you know, the first week in December. That's, that's another four weeks for them to do their work.
But you have to take out Thanksgiving week.
You don't have to take out Thanksgiving week. It's not like people. You can take it two days. I mean, this four, you don't, don't take the whole week out, but I'm just saying from, from November tenth to December eighth or, or, you know, or even the December first. If you want to make it three, give them three weeks to do their work.
Your last column?
Yep.
Just trying to, your last column means that you have recommendations on the seventh. You could, then you have the fourteenth and the twenty first. That gives you guys three meetings to meet.
Right. I'm just trying to schedule in, I, I agree, we don't need a huge window of time between interviewing publicly the people and making the announcement.
Right.
So that last column allows you really to make the announcement by the fourteenth.
Or the twenty first if you want the week after you've done the public interviews, right?
I would recommend going with two weeks. I mean, I think as Ms. Wahlberg mentioned, you know, people know that the position is open. We're giving people two weeks notice of an open window where they can actually submit their applications. I'm sure they've already compiled all of the information. They're probably applying to other districts as well. And not to be rude about it, but if we're opening it for three weeks, thinking that we're going to get somebody who's, it's going to take them that third week to compile their information. Then my thought process is like, how ready are they to lead if it's taking them an extra week to do that? They're either interested in coming to North Andover or they're not, and I think that that's done in a two-week period.
My thought process is different, for different reasons. I think, you know, there's been some scuttlebutt by some people that say that we try to do an internal search and we're trying to make this a bag job of some kind. But, so giving more time to let more candidates come in would say, hey, we're letting, we're letting people come and apply now. That's where I'd rather go with.
I, I look at two weeks as well.
I'm afraid we're going to be accused, if we, if it's just two weeks, open for two weeks, we're going to be accused of, we feel we've accused us of, of us already, so.
But we announced that last week that we were going to do it, right?
Right.
Or we were looking at doing it. Any other thoughts?
I haven't heard any feedback that, that two weeks is not enough time and I'm hearing from Carrie Wahlberg that two weeks is plenty of time. I, I think the only thing that would make a huge difference is if we were going to go out and, you know, advertise all over the world or, or whatever. I'm very comfortable with two weeks.
Well, I've talked to some people who said that there's, you're going to post on something tomorrow and all the people who look, that's where they look and they will know about it.
They will know. It'll be out there for everyone.
And again, I'll come from the point of view where we, we have the battle of perception that's out there right now.
Mm-hmm.
That's why, I, I agree, two weeks is fine. Three weeks is better for perception reasons.
Any comments?
I agree with the two weeks for the same reasons Mr. McDevitt said. If people are interested, they, they will apply within that two weeks. It's plenty of time. And if it takes somebody a third week, you know, to decide and apply, then that, that just says something to me.
Okay. We need to determine if we're going to be open for two weeks or three weeks.
So I'll move that we open the position of superintendent for a period of two weeks, beginning tomorrow or tonight. If you want to do that with, with an end date of November third.
Which is a Friday.
Which is Friday. So if you are inclined to post it tonight, you can if you.
So we have a motion for, from December tw, uh, November, October twentieth to November third, opening two weeks.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witzke Lynch. It sounds like a roll call vote. Is that what you guys usually, I always forget which is which. All right, Mr. Trissey would be a no. Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Card?
Yes.
Ms. Witzke Lynch?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that would be a four, one, to go for two weeks. Back to though, we're talking about the fact that if we public interview on November seventh, we have a huge.
December seventh.
December, gosh, December seventh, we have a huge gap of time before we make an announcement that we don't feel is necessary. We could put a meeting on November thirtieth. For public interview instead, or we could go with, keep it the way it is and instead add a meeting on November fourteenth, December fourteenth to make the announcement. Or do, do we need a meeting to?
Do we need to map this out right now? Because, you know, let's see what the applications come in. I mean, if there's only a handful of applications that come in, you're not going to need that kind of time. But if there's a bunch of, if there's something, if the search committee, I'm sorry, has a bunch to review, they may need two or three weeks to go through it at least. I don't, I don't see why we have to bang up these dates. I mean, I think obviously the, posting the date of, what'd you say, November third, that's important. But these other dates aren't, you know, aren't, aren't critical to the, the process, I don't think. I mean, they could need a lot of time, they could need a little time. Depends who applies, how many people apply. I wouldn't want to lock ourselves into it.
I, I think what we're doing is we're trying to put target dates down.
Right, so that we, our committee's meeting Tuesday.
With the committee. And that they know, for example, that the selection of who to interview is done by the ninth. So a week after it closes and then they are lining up potential interviews, I would say probably that week of November eleventh. So somewhere in the thirteenth, fifteenth timeline here and then coming out with recommendations.
Right, because.
Just to give them the parameters. And if they, you know, get a hundred applicants, because a hundred people want to come here, then that's fantastic. But then they could come back and say, you know, we, we need additional time. But I think to put a target and a goal, if we don't have a goal of a date, we're working towards nothing.
Well, and the, the reason for the timeline is that November sixteenth is an already established meeting date. That was, and trying to get that figured out. Getting all the interviews done by the subcommittee as to who they want to recommend to put forward. And then we'd have the Thanksgiving break and then time to set up the timeline for us to interview the candidates, do the site visits, all those things that you just mentioned. I actually, I hear your point, Mr. Trissey, that we might end up having a ton and we were making a very tight window.
We have thirteen days, not including the weekends, that's what you have for the, the search committee to do all their work, so.
If we did the recommendations on the thirtieth, so say we had a meeting on the thirtieth, did the recommendations then. Is that enough time between, the thirtieth, that's one week, to the seventh to do, if we're doing the site visits first? Or no, I don't know.
Well, you said it was super tight last time. Not that we want that. I don't think we want, I don't think we want to set that up again because it sounds.
It depends how many site visits we have to.
Right.
But I think the thir, the thirtieth gives the, the people time.
It's more time, yeah.
To, you appointed fifteen people to participate in something. To think that in thirteen days you can schedule them all, I mean, kind of match schedule, I think it's just going to be very difficult.
No, I think you're right.
In a short period of time.
I think you're right. So if we put a meeting eleven thirty.
If the goal is for them to give us three names or four names or five, whatever, whatever it is. By November thirtieth. If the five of us can't come to a decision in twenty-one days, I'd be shocked.
Right.
And we could do all our work. All I'm saying is, we don't know, once we get those camp, we know what work we have to do. They don't know yet what have, what they have to do.
Right, because we don't know, you're right. We, it's easier from our end. It's, you're absolutely right. So we already said we liked an idea of a meeting in November thirtieth.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point.
Can I just ask Dr. Price a quick question? Obviously last time.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Hey, I got it right. You know, we moved quickly, but it felt. Hey, I got it right. You know, we moved quickly, but it felt like all other communities were moving just as quickly. I mean, is that really the pace that it, I mean, I don't feel like we over-rushed it, but I feel like, once there were, you know, an interest in publicly interviewing, and then doing site visits, and then doing all that, that that's a short window by nature.
Once you become public, once that decision is made, I recommend a tight timeline, because what happens is, as it happened last time, now, maybe we won't have that same situation, but you talked about the site visits. I had three communities visiting my school in the same week.
Right.
So, once it becomes public, and everyone knows you're in different searches, that's when the tight timeline. So, I would recommend that you put, you at least schedule these dates just in your calendar, and you see where- where it goes, right? And I, and maybe you won't have, other communities will be, you know, we've looked at the timelines, and I don't think you're gonna line up the same this time. But once names become public, things happen, and I just think you wanna build in as much flexibility as possible for yourself.
Okay.
So, you know, hopefully, you will not be in a situation like you were last time, where it was, everyone was speeding up because they all knew each other. But once it's public, it's public knowledge, and everybody's watching each other, if you share candidates. But you may not share candidates.
True.
So, but, you know, the one thing I would say, setting up a site visit is, takes a while, so you do need to give a candidate a little bit of time to set up a site visit. You can't really call them on a Friday and say, I wanna come in next Tuesday, because they have to spit, right, right, no, no, but, 'cause they have to set up-
That was my recollection, though. That definitely, unless their sites visits were set up prior to the three finalists being named, which could've easily happened.
Well, what I can tell you, for me, was, yes, that was a bit of your recollection, but I already had two communities coming in, to add a third was no big deal for me. But, but I'm saying, I think it is best practice to give someone at least a few days to set up a site visit, 'cause it's- it's a hard thing to set up, to get all the right people to come in at the right time, and, so that would be my recommendation.
That could be something that, as we start to make recommendations for, or letting people know that, you know, we're gonna present your name, it's gonna be public, do you agree to do that? Okay, so we're gonna present that, and I'm just making up dates here, so don't hold me to them, but, you know, we're looking at the 7th, if we're doing that, then I anticipate we would do a site visit here, you know, at your district, and then coming back. So that, you know, we would be basically telling people, probably at that November 30th meeting, we're gonna make you public on the 7th, and then the following week. That's really giving people, I think, time. But I think we have to build that into the calendar so that we can work back with them.
Or, or the committee could recommend, I mean, obviously, if two members of your committee, who could say, we're gonna recommend these three people, and they could call and say, next week, we're gonna recommend you, and can we set up a site visit? So, on the 30th, they can announce the three finalists and the site visits.
And the date for that, yeah, that's great.
Can already do that.
Yeah, no, that's great.
And you could actually announce the finalists on the 7th. I mean, you could, on- on the 30th, they could make their recommendation, then you could start, you two, meeting as, you know, in a sec, you can start setting up those visits.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I just think you wanna give someone time to do that.
Right.
Yeah, no, I agree. But I think putting that a little bit into the timeline-
Yep.
Puts a little bit of awareness to that.
Yep.
Because it's, I've gotta imagine, disruptive to a school and a district.
And you have to remember that you need to give, if it is a person, you have to give the person in the other district the opportunity to break the news to the rest of, to their district, that they are looking to go somewhere else. So, i- i- it, right, so, so, if someone is looking to leave, right, and to come here-
Right.
They have to tell their district and ask people to come speak about them, which is a tricky thing to navigate. So, you wanna give them a little time to do that.
I think we're gonna play time.
Yep. So, if we're saying we, then, November 30th is when we would have the recommendations to this group, and then still try to have the public interview on the 7th, and in between the public interview, do those site visits.
Right.
That one week.
Yep. Unless we're making our announcement on the 14th or the 21st, there's no reason why we have to do site visits before the public interview.
That doesn't, I, I, so you don't have to do that in that order?
Correct.
Okay, you can do it afterward if you wanted to.
Neither.
So, we obviously like the idea, we're gonna have to add the meeting on November 30th. I think that's good. So, we would, instead of having the 16th, like you're saying, Mr. Trissey, wait, give more time to the committee to work.
Would we still have the meeting on the 16th?
We would have, still have the meeting, we have lots of other business to do, right.
Cause we're not gonna have a long time.
Right. Yeah, no, we need that time. But we would add a meeting, but to this timeline, we would not, this would not take a lot of that activity. But if for some reason, we had a small, if the situation were different, we could use that time, either way. But the meeting will stay, we just need to add a meeting on November 30th. Does that mean that we also need a meeting on November 14th, on December 14th? Because if you're doing the public interviews on the 7th, then you're, you have to go all the way to the 21st?
I think, if we didn't move it, move it, I mean, we created a meeting last week out of thin air.
Right. So, if we need to do that, we can.
I think you can do that.
Okay.
I would just, the 16th, November 16th, we, it's on the books.
Yes.
We already canceled the 2nd.
Yes. So, we're gonna add the 30th in place of the 2nd.
We can figure it out for that.
That sounds great.
Depending on the level of candidates.
All right. So, I would entertain a motion to add a meeting on November 30th, school committee meeting. So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by, I don't know, I don't even write this down, I don't know why I always write it down, 'cause I know, Ben Zagar is writing it down.
We clerked it out.
Exactly.
Aye.
By Helen Picard, and the second by Mr. McDevitt, was that right?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of adding November 30th?
Aye.
Aye. Fabulous. Okay, thank you. I will clean this up and make sure everybody has it. Thank you for projecting that, Jim. Thank you very much.
Keep it posted.
Ms. Wahlberg, okay. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Mabley, for all that work.
You're welcome.
It's like a show game.
Yes, I know. I, I like Excel. My poor daughter was asking for help, and I was like, I can't talk to you right now. Okay, so if we can move on to the update about class size.
Yeah, I just thought, Mr. Mealy presented to the FinCom this week, and we did a little bit of a chart that I just thought I'd take a moment to share with you. So, you remember, we added four classrooms to the elementary level this past year, and I just thought it would be useful, we added one the previous year. Twenty-nine percent of our classes are above this, our class size goal, as articulated by the school committee. That is significant change from a few years ago, where they were up around 53. So, I just wanted to show you the impact of our policy changes. It's still not great to have 30% or so of our classes above where we want them to be, and you know, we are continuing to work on that. But it is exciting to see that our allocation of resources and our focus on this goal is making some, some real progress in terms of class sizes across our district.
Just this one question, you might not know this off the top of your head. So, that 29%, that's still over, are they in the higher grades, or the littler grades, or is it all over the map?
He has every number in his whole head, if you ask him anything.
This was the best year ever for this, as a result of bringing it down to 29%. Because any new move-ins to North Andover, we've really had to move them out of their home school that they were scheduled to go to, provide transportation. This year, the only ones that were capped out at the beginning of the school year was Atkinson kindergarten and Thompson 5th grade.
5th grade.
So, Thompson 5th grade was at 28, and Atkinson kindergarten was at 24. So, those were the two that were capped out, and other than that, we've had a lot of increased enrollments in some places with move-ins, but it's been really nice. That getting that low is, we've never had a year this easy of placing kids.
Fantastic.
I think our only really large ones are Thompson 5th grade, that's at 28, right?
Yeah.
That's the capped at 28, yeah.
I don't think we have any other in the district that are 28?
Um, no.
No. Which is good.
Yeah.
Actually, I have a Thompson 5th grader, and it's fine. Very seasoned teachers, great group of kids, it's, they're doing fine. I mean, obviously, it's not ideal, but they're making it happen, so, thank you.
Yeah, and we'll give you a full array once the- the October numbers come in, so we will do that at our November 16th. But I just thought-
That's great.
Since Mr. Mealy had prepared this, that it's, it's nice to see that what we're working on is making a difference.
Right.
I can tell you, I mean, my daughter is in a 4th grade class that I think has either 17 or 18 students, and it is shocking to walk into the classroom and just see how much space there is for the kids to be able to move, and go, and sit, and do reading time, and all of that.
Collaborate, yeah.
I mean, not that the other classrooms were bad, I don't mean to say that, but there was just so many desks in it. You walked in, and you were literally bumping into them, and there's freedom to kind of move, which is just, it's amazing.
And the 4th grade is one we added, at K-.
Yes, yes.
We added the 3rd, 4th grade, it would've been quite large.
It would've been enormous, but I think there's three that are, you know, roughly in the 18 average.
Yeah, that's great.
It's great.
And I would also say that, you know, if you remember, at Franklin, we have a 1-2. And that is-
Yes.
I've been in that a number of times, and it's really exciting to see how that is working, and working really well. Much of the writing and reading is happening collaboratively, and she is doing an amazing job-
Yeah.
Differentiating the, the math. It's been exciting to see how, how the students are supporting each other in centers, and there's a Merrimack fellow in there, along with teaching assistant, and it, it, I'm excited about that.
Yeah, and the coaches, and Lorraine and Kara, and the work they've done to support that teacher. And she was an early adopter for writing, and it's going really well.
Yeah, that's exciting.
The other place that made a big difference, and I'll just point out, was that, adding the extra grade to the 5th grade at Atkinson, to their 4th grade, because if you remember last year-
It was crazy.
They were at 29. We had to go over, because there just wasn't any bussing from where the kids were moving into. So, that, that's made a big, big difference over there.
That's great.
Great.
Thank you for that update. Budget status report, Mr. Mealy?
So, again, the second budget status report for the year doesn't tell you a lot, as you can see, as you look at it, we are at the spending rate you would anticipate this time of year. I will say, just preparing you for November, it's usually when I start to project where we will finish the year. It's usually enough information, things have settled down. So, the only things happening after that, for the most part, are maybe 45-day placement or a move-in that we hadn't anticipated. But, yeah, usually, November is the budget status report, where we start projecting what we think we're gonna have for the end of the year.
Anything that you're concerned about at this point?
No, no, not at this point. Out of district placement is in good shape right now. That allowed us to, and we may have talked about this, where we didn't get as much in Circuit Breaker, the percentage was lower this year, that they reimbursed at. But, they've been doing a very good job of creating programs and bringing students back in. So, that has offset the loss we saw in Circuit Breaker. It helped us handle that, and everything else is where it should be.
Okay, Ms. Mealy. Any other questions?
Just a, a quick one. I think I'm looking at the high school here. But what's the difference between, like, forms and, where is it? I just lost the page, I'm sorry. Printing and forms and textbooks in some of these?
So, they all have, each school has allocation funds, and there are all those different categories that are accessible to them. But they, they get to choose, principals get to choose what they need for the year. And so, printing and forms at the high school is, is more of a need than it is at, at some of the other schools. So, they generally allocate money in that category, and you might not see it in the other schools. Whereas textbooks are strictly textbooks, that they decide, we need science books this year, or maybe not the books themselves, some type of electronic version of the book. But that's what that line is for, and you're gonna see that spent on different things each year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not right now, thank you, though.
Thank you, Mr. Mealy.
Mm-hmm.
That concludes our old business. We have some new business. First is the overnight trips.
Yep, we have three trips ahead of you. And, as always, we'll just do our first reading. Any questions you may have, I'm happy to go back and get answers for you. So, the first one is our trip to the Scarlet Knights headed to Montreal with Sarah Durkin in, in, in March, so-
Can you just clarify the date of return?
Is March 18th, it is not-
Thank you.
September 18th, I apologize.
A little back to the future there.
That would've been a little bit of trouble.
Okay.
Back in time, yeah.
Yes. So-
No, they'd be gone.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Back in time. With Michael J. Fox, yeah.
So, any questions about that one?
I think, I just think that there's a typo here. It's not the Scarlet Knights Montreal trip, it's the Scarlet and Black Singers.
Okay, Scarlet and Black Singers. Yep, there we go. They see that in there. Twenty, approximately 27 students.
They are amazing.
They are amazing. Any questions on that one?
I actually, I have questions in general about this. So, we get a lot of these very exciting trips, they're awesome, they're, they're achievements, they're, they're rewards, they're competitions, all kinds of things. And I personally can't keep track of what we've already agreed to and whatnot. So, is this the second chorus or Scarlet and Black trip, or first? Have we, is this gonna be like the ninth singing group trip that they're taking, like?
Why don't we get a list of you, for instance?
I think, I don't know-
Yeah, I can do that.
It would be helpful to me to know, are, are some of these kids who are in the Scarlet Knight, Scarlet and Black going to Montreal, also gonna be going to the Boston, and-
Yes, yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. It just would be helpful to know-
Yep, I can get a list.
How many we've already approved as well.
Yeah, I actually thought your question was gonna be different, like, if this was the seventh trip for the Scarlet Knights compared to whether or not students were taking advantage of multiple opportunities. But, no, I mean-
Just to, to understand how often, I mean, it's wonderful that they get these opportunities, but do they take every opportunity they're offered? Can families afford to say yes every time to their kids? Has it put people in a tough position to agree to some of these? Just, just to understand how many things, 'cause I, I think all the opportunities are great, but I would wanna be sure that I'm not suddenly burdening-
Yeah.
Somebody six times over.
I would have to assume that out of the 27 Scarlet and Black Singers, that they are probably also in the choir concert-
Yeah.
As well, right, so.
And that's what made me think of it, because these are back-to-back.
Right, right.
And I know DECA, they gave us three at once last week-
Yes.
Or two weeks ago, whichever. So, we kinda saw, I think that was the DECA program, unless they earn an opportunity to go elsewhere.
Yeah.
It just would be helpful to me to understand how many of these things each group is pursuing.
Right, and you'll see that the next one is the Concert Choir, 175 students competing in Boston. It looks like it's only a half day of school miss-
Right, which is very different, right.
Which is less concerning to me.
But they're still overnight in a hotel, and stuff like that, so just, just, um-
So, that's the second one, any question?
Yeah, the second one, so, so they're spending two nights at, at a hotel overnight.
Yep.
It looks like the second night, they're just, like, they're spending the night, and then they're getting up and having breakfast and coming home. I, I wonder, again, for, is this what families want to be doing? Do they wanna be spending that much more money on another night of a hotel, or would they rather come home late from Boston that night, or if, if that's an option at all? I don't know, so I'm just asking. I don't know, so I'm just asking.
Let me ask and I'll get back to you.
Yep.
Yep, okay. And then the last one is one that we've done for the last two years, which I believe we have a school committee member whose kid participated in it.
I do, yes, yes, I did.
So this is the going to Jackson, Wyoming, Yellowstone and the Teton National Park trip. That is done through the summer school program. Students get credit for it. And this was the first trip that we had Wilif recipients go on and get academic support, I mean, financial support for.
The the question that I have on this one is that it says grade level in school group is high school. Last time they brought some eighth graders and from all accounts it was very successful. So I don't know if that if that wants to say, you know, eighth grade through high school.
So I think it was gonna be high school, but let me talk to them about how we wanna write that.
Yeah.
Because at that point they are considered high school, right? They've graduated from eighth grade.
Oh, I see. Oh, I didn't think about that. That's true. So that means this year seniors can't go next summer.
Yeah, it's, once a kid graduates, we get in trouble if we send them on a field trip.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
All right. I'll get back to you with those answers.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next is the first reading of the capital improvement plan.
Mr. Mealy. So what you have is you have last year, this current year, what was approved and what is happening. I don't have to tell you about the elementary classroom kindergarten project. We all know about that one. And the field turf replacement occurred this summer. And we also had the hundred thousand annual IT infrastructure. What we did with that one is that is based on the value of the asset. And at the time when we started this line, it was about a million dollars. And it's gone up to now to two million dollars in the infrastructure for our IT. And that's why you can see in FY twenty-one, we bumped it up to two hundred thousand because they say you should have about ten percent per year to maintain that asset. Regarding the other ones, and that's the only item we really have for this year. You may recall that we had last year the Atkinson roof. But given that we are looking to do renovations at Atkinson, Franklin and Kittredge, following the kindergarten project, we thought it made more sense to include the roof as part of the Atkinson renovations. And I worked with Steve Foster for our facilities manager who feels that that's fine. We can get to that point. Yep. And then the other one, you'll notice district-wide paving. We had a placeholder there of two hundred thousand dollars, but last year I contracted with Beta. Beta engineers at the DPW use as well to come in and assess our pavement district-wide. And the total cost to do all of our pavement needs is four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So what we've done is similar to the IT, put in an annual amount of a hundred and fifty thousand for three years and then a maintaining amount of fifty thousand after that. And we should be able to keep our pavement in good shape once we've repaired it.
And what constitutes the pavement? Just parking lots or access roads or?
It's the sidewalks, the curbing and the pavement. So the road in, the parking lot, it's all of it.
So like the high school, that road?
Yep.
That's.
Sergeant, the road down.
Long road, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Thompson, not much?
Nope. No road.
The new kindergarten center, that'll be going in and all of the fields and all of that. I mean, when would we envision doing that and would that be covered by capital improvement coming from here? Or is that part of building costs? How does that get factored in?
Yeah, that's actually a combination of the site immediate to the structure. It's part of the project. And then the town will be taking care of the the roads around the site and going back down to the middle school and all the parking lots.
Okay.
Yep.
Ballpark, I think within ten to fifteen feet of the building is covered by the schools.
Covered by the school, okay.
And then lastly, the drainage, we're doing the same thing, working with Steve Foster to identify our needs in that third year. Putting fifty thousand in per year should allow us to keep it where it needs to be.
Drainage of parking of?
No, if you look around and if you walk in a parking lot and you see a drain that's kinda sunken down.
Okay.
They start to give and and sometimes you'll have a problem on the ground, but not more so it's the structures that come up to the surface. Over at Atkinson at the entrance, you'll see one that gets clogged up on a regular basis and you need to go in and really clean it out. Those kind of things.
Okay.
Yep. So that's it. That's our proposal.
So for this coming budget year, we just need to do some IT?
I will say, if you look at the bottom there, we've had conversations with the town manager regarding putting the Atkinson, Franklin and Kittredge renovations. And they felt that it was appropriate that they will include it as part of the facilities master plan phase two going forward, that it's more appropriate that it's there than in the CIP request.
Yeah, and and the other part, the other asterisks there is the middle school renovation project, right? So a lot of this is hinging on our MSBA and where it's headed. So, you know, as you look ahead for this town, you're looking at potentially four large school projects that are ahead. And that doesn't even include the kindergarten, so five. And so really thinking critically about how you're gonna do them, what is going to be the timing of those? And then as you'll notice, the funding source not yet determined, right? Is also how are, is this going to be funded? Is this gonna be done all at once or is this gonna be spread out over time? I think we've all been very transparent that the middle school renovation is gonna not be able to be done within current debt limits, right? So how how are you gonna do this? And, you know, if you're if you're gonna do a middle school project, would it make sense to put all of them together? And do them or to put them out over time? So a lot hinges on the middle school. Because that is the biggest, that's gonna be the biggest price tag. And once that timing is determined, then you can start to think about the Franklin, Atkinson, Kittredge timeline.
So we don't need to be previewing that because the town managers.
The town managers on, we're talking a lot about it. And I think any conversations about that timeline are very premature until we know what the MSBA says about the middle school.
Well, just because during the whole kindergarten discussion, it was made quite clear that we have issues at Franklin with their gym and things like that. And so not seeing it here is troublesome to me. But it's gonna show up elsewhere and not seven years from now.
Correct.
Okay.
And the challenge is putting it within the capital improvement plan. The numbers are just quite large. So you need to be thoughtful about that in a way that makes sense.
And so we're not making any mistakes by not, no, looking at that.
It's either here or it's there.
Right, and they're saying it's gonna be there. That's great. Okay.
Yep. And the last asterisk, just as anyone who's been following us for a few years had seen Atkinson sprinklers and Franklin sprinklers come and go. That was included when KBA did their
Right.
estimates as part of the renovations for those two schools. So it would be included.
Right, that's excellent.
Just a point of clarification. The facilities master plan is separate from the town master plan that we're meeting on on November second, correct?
It's it's kind of, the way it's been described to me is that a facilities master plan is part of the overall master plan. Right, but the master plan is is over everything, not just facilities.
Thank you. Any other questions or? Thank you. Quest for additional positions?
Okay. So this is what we think will be the last, but we never know for sure. It's all dependent on student needs really. And in this case also some operational needs. But as we had before, we came forward with some positions and these were kinda, I think we identified them at the time, but we were just kinda making sure about the needs. And so we're looking to add a point five teaching assistant at Sardine Elementary, a point four speech language pathologist at the high school and Franklin, that would be combined, and a one point oh behavior technician at Thompson Elementary. In addition to a one point oh administrative assistant for payroll and human resources. We had, if you recall, the beginning of the year, tried to fund a TA position by giving up the administrative assistant position. Come to find out that that's not gonna work. We really need that resource. So what we're gonna do in that case is, we have two maintenance positions. We have a very good maintenance man that we were able to hire, but it's been really difficult to find somebody with the certifications that we require for the second position. So we'll put that one on hold for now and use those funds for this position. So to the total cost would be sixty-three six, of which thirty-nine six hundred would come from turnover savings and twenty-four thousand, which is what we would anticipate by the time you bring them on board for the rest of the year, would be the cost for the rest of this year.
That leaves us twenty-seven thousand dollars in turnover savings. Just so you know, we are not spending all of it at this time.
Can I assume that these positions are already posted?
We did post them.
Okay.
We have it on, in some cases, because they are student-specific, we have a long-term sub. We cannot make them a full-time employee until we vote.
So can I ask another question? With moving out our November second meeting, should we try to suspend the bylaws in favor of being able to fill this to meet the needs of the student?
That would be very helpful.
Very helpful.
Okay. So I will move that we suspend the bylaws to approve or to vote on the additional positions for the remainder of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Second. Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Vizki Lynch. All in favor? I do after we'll call that, sorry. Mr. Trissy?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Vizki Lynch? Ms. Mealy says yes. Thank you.
So now I will move that the school committee approve the requested additional positions for the remainder of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen year as identified in the packet.
Second. Same. Mr. McDevitt, Ms. Vizki Lynch, Mr. Trissy?
Yes.
I don't need to do like, I don't know why this is confusing to me. Okay, all in favor.
Roll call and then just, yeah.
All in favor. Aye, opposed, go. Very good. Thank you.
Just as a reminder too, these positions have to be approved as part of FY nineteen budget in order to stay as full-time positions.
So you're gonna need to, I would imagine that if somebody is for a specific student and the student's still here, you're gonna still need the person next year.
We would request it, correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. And MCAS.
All right, so I have a fun one for you guys. I'm gonna try to make this as accessible as possible. Please stop me at any time. Those who know me well know when I get started to talking about data, sometimes I go really quickly. So please, 'cause I get excited. So first thing, there has been a major, major change in MCAS. If you've been reading the papers, you will know. And I just really wanted to kind of explain that to you, give you the state perspective and then give you the impact on North Andover at the district level. We will come back to the individual schools, probably November sixteenth now, to explain what is each school looks like. Maybe a little later in the year, but we'll have principals come in. So I'm just gonna give you the district perspective at this point. We got the data on Monday, so we've been working furiously to get this to you. So and it was it was only publicly released on Wednesday, so.
And on Tuesday, the Department of Education held a conference call at noon to explain the Monday data.
Yeah, so it's been a quick, yeah, it's been fun. So anyways, the thing that's most important is that two terminology, some terminology you need to know. The department is talking about the legacy MCAS, which is the old MCAS, which is now twenty years old, and the next generation MCAS. The legacy MCAS has, is still in place in science and at the high school. All right, so just the terminology that we're doing. So eventually all of it will be replaced by the next generation of MCAS. And so this year, the first time grades three through eight in ELA in math, the next generation MCAS were were given. So if you go on to the next slide, computer-based testing. So as you may remember, we went completely computer-based last year. Sixty percent of all grades three through eight took the test and they required it in fourth and eighth. We made the decision to go fully computer, which we think was a good decision for our kids to have exposure to the computer. The next thing that's really important to understand is. Yep.
Sixty percent of all grades across the state.
All, we did a hundred percent.
Right.
This is, so I'm talking state now and then I will get to North Andover, but thanks for the clarification. The thing that's really important to understand is some people may say, well, wait a minute, you chose to you chose to take the computer-based test. We know that when kids take computer-based tests, their scores are often lower than paper-based test. The state did a conversion to ensure that computer results were the same as paper results. So I just wanna let everyone know that if you get that question.
I would trust the state in that.
Okay, so here we go. So if we go down, again, here it is, is the legacy. If you go down, here are the different, keep going, Jim. Here is the next generation, as I explained, and then the legacy MCAS. Does that make sense for everyone? All right, so I think it's really important to understand what are these scores going to look like? So if you go to the next page, and this is where it becomes incredibly important. In the legacy test, we're very used to the advanced proficient needs improvement and warning. We are now moving to exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations and not meeting expectations. Totally new achievement levels. So when we talk about advanced proficient, we're talking about legacy, I mean, we're talking about the legacy test. When we're talking about partially meets, meets, exceeds, we're talking about the next generation. And it's important, one of the concerns that superintendents across the state have articulated is if you look at the partially meeting expectations language that is gonna be sent to parents, it talks about the fact, the school in consultation with the student, parent, guardians should consider whether student needs additional academic assistance to succeed in a subject. That is concerning to us because it feels like this is pushing for a whole bunch of additional supports, which might include special education placements that are requests for testing. And superintendents across the state are worried that especially when, and I'll explain this, when fifty percent of the students in the state of Massachusetts are either partially meeting or not meeting expectations, that we need to be thoughtful about that language.
Yeah, they basically said kids that were formerly proficient are most likely going to be in partially meets the expectations and exceeding expectations. You may find some of those kids in proficient. I mean, they weren't, that were advanced down to meet.
So if you go to the next page, it looks, if you go to the next page, you'll see what the score report is gonna look like for parents. So if you remember, it used to go from two hundred to two eighty. It now goes from four forty to five sixty. So.
Did you talk about that in the conference call, why they do that?
Well, I think one of the reasons they changed it is they wanted to send a clear message that this test is not the same. So if they use the same window, then kids would say.
It just seems to be a random four forty to five sixty. Why not?
I, yeah.
Why not four forty-one?
So here's the, here's the most critical part of it. This next slide is the most critical part in my, and this is really important to understand. You will see this is state-level data. This is not North Andover data. Fifty percent or fewer in some cases of all the students in the state of Massachusetts will have been seen as not meeting the expectations. And you will also see that the exceeds expectations is a very, very small band, often in the single digits in terms of percentages at the state level. So what this means is, and I'll show you the the next, is that that a higher percentage of students are gonna be seen as partially meeting or not meeting. If you go down, Jim, and then I'll come back up to this, go down to this slide, you will see this is the exact same distribution for the legacy MCAS. So again, just to make it really clear, these are the the advanced and proficient.
Did you create these slides or these from?
No, these are from Dessie.
These are from Dessie?
I was gonna say, I mean, they're gonna, it's not clear at all.
I know, but that's why I'm standing up.
To make it clear.
There's a lot more screen there.
So but what I think is really important, so let's just take grade, well, let's just take third grade ELA. You can see that last year, between advanced and proficient, basically only thirty-eight percent of the students were either in needs improvement are in warning, right? Now that number's gonna go up to fifty. So you can see when you put the blue and the red together, right? Look at fifth grade ELA. Twenty-eight percent of the students or so are below the proficient mark. That number's now gonna be up to about fifty, right? So you can see that the differential is quite significant. And what that's gonna mean for our kids, as Mr. Gilligan said, is a number of the students who were in green are now gonna be in yellow. A number of the students who are in yellow are now gonna be in red. Does that make sense? So the needs improvement, sorry, the warning or the not meeting is pretty similar. But the places where you're gonna see the biggest change, you have a number of kids, and if you can think about this, a number of kids who scored, let's just take the green, advanced in third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade are now gonna be meeting expectations in seventh grade. And it's gonna be a difficult conversation to have with a kid to say, you've been advanced in MCAS for all these years and now you're meeting expectations that has nothing to do with use for performing differently. It has everything to do with the fact that the state has moved the goalposts. So we thought we were on the ten-yard line and actually now we're on the thirty-yard line. Right? So that's how this is going to translate.
In the delay in getting these cutoffs was that they were working with Pearson, measured progress that teachers who graded the test and Dessie all summer and fall to try to determine these cutoffs and that's why they came out so late.
My concern is, not necessarily all this BS, but what's the conversation like? I mean, who makes the conversation with the kids? I mean, 'cause you're right, we moved the goalposts. These kids didn't get more stupid, you know? We moved the goalposts. So how's, how is that conveyed to the kids and the parents? Because, you know, I get frustrated, I vent my frustration about the, our friends down in Moldan all the time. But to me, you know, my kids aren't old enough to be taking MCAS. But if I, I'd be, I'd be BS about this. I really would. So what's that conversation like?
So I did send a letter to all of the faculty on Wednesday as the scores were being released. And I did give them some talking points for conversations that they would be having between themselves and parents and counselors about with kids. And I said a few things and and one thing that I'll get into a little bit more is that kids get actually two two indicators of success. One is the achievement level and the other is actually they're still putting on the student growth percentile. And that is the only way to equate what happened prior to now. So if you remember, what happens is all the kids who scored a two forty last time get put in a bin. And then based on their score now on the next generation, five, whatever, they get percentile ranked and that's how they get told how they grew compared to other kids who scored like they did in the previous test. And so one of the things that you're gonna see, and I can show you in the North Andover results, is our student growth percentiles are quite impressive. And I would imagine in a number of cases, kids will have maybe scored worse in terms of achievement level, but their student growth percentile be above fifty, which is above the state average. And so I think it's. And so I think it's important that we talk about both of them. It's also important that when we're talking with parents, that MCAS is one piece of data, and that we need to remember, especially this year with the fact that this is a reset, this is a new baseline, whatever language we're going to use, this is something that we just cannot focus too much time on. We need to make sure that we're talking about other aspects. The other thing I'm going to say is, we in North Andover are actually ahead of a lot of this, in my opinion, because we have adopted now two curricula who, that are aligned much more with what's now being tested in the new test, which is both UC-Cawkins and Eureka Math. And we anticipated this change. We're not reacting, we anticipated this change, and you'll see that in some of our scores. And the last thing, David, is, and I was actually, had a long conversation with the Boston Globe today about this exact question, is it's a difficult conversation. And for me, if I thoroughly understood while the state moved the goalposts, I would be supportive. I think most of us are struggling to understand why the goalposts were moved. Because at the same time that we were told the goalposts were moved and 50% of the students in Massachusetts were not meeting expectations, we were getting numerous emails from the State Department of Education asking us to join in the leading the nation celebration, where Massachusetts is being honored as the top public school system in the country. On the exact same day we are getting those invitations, we are getting our MCAS results. And that feels not connected to me. And it feels as if, again, as you know me, if, you know me well, if there was work for, if there's work for us to do, we're going to do it. But the challenge is, what they're saying is, you know, we need to be college and career-ready and all of these things. Much of what was said when we adopted the initial MCAS. And I, and I'm, I think many of us in the field are struggling with, why were the goalposts moved?
Well, my frustration, you know, with DOE goes way back before I became a school committee member here, you know, when I re-strapped the city of Lawrence. But, you know, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, this is not a legislative mandate to do this. This is not a federal mandate to do this. This is a bunch of bureaucrats down in Malden just making this decision without, it seems to me, what you just said, without a lot of input from people like yourself that are on the front lines.
They would argue that the, that the, they have said that the benchmarks were set by Massachusetts educators. And that process is, seems a little tricky.
So just remember the old NCLB, it's now called ESSA, and that's the reauthorization of the Education Act. And that's really taken away a lot of the federal power. But what it's done is, it's given a lot of power back to the states. And in order to comply with the law in ESSA, states have to have some type of testing. The federal government's not saying what that is, so the states have to come up with their own. And these tests look very different than other states.
So let me get to North Andover so we can at least understand where we stand. Yep?
So I'm wondering if partially meets matches up with the standards and if it's going to be helpful to schools to be able to say, okay, this, this student partially met the expectation. In these areas, for example, math, okay, so they can add and subtract fractions, but they can't multiply and divide fractions. Is that what they mean by partially met? They've done some of the things that they need to do based on the standards? Or does it just mean, like, got some random score, or they got some right and some wrong?
So what they do, and they, it's interesting, because we do get a lot of results, and we spend a lot of time with teachers and the principals analyzing. But interestingly enough, they only tell you what standard you got wrong. They don't release the questions like they used to. It sounds like they're only releasing four or five questions at this point. They used to release 60%, and then they didn't want to have to create more questions in the question bank, so then it got lower and lower. The point being is, the standards are the standards that were adopted in 2011, that we've been working really hard to teach to those standards. And when the kids take these tests, you know, if it's third grade and it's geometry and it's number sense and those particular things, within those standards for the third grade level, this, we'll understand where they may have gone wrong in the particular standard. But we're still waiting to find out with the analysis, I don't think it's as comprehensive just yet as the old MCAS, because the old MCAS could tell you, oh, they got this wrong, they showed you an example of what was wrong.
And then you could see if there were clusters, right? I mean, so you could see if, like, third graders across North Andover were having trouble with a certain concept. So then you could strike them the teaching around that.
I think we're still going to be able to do a lot of that. I will be transparent, we have not gotten there yet, given that really the results.
Yeah, there's a lot to be dealing with. I was just, I'm just interested in that language, why are they calling it partially meets the expectation?
It's the same as the old categories, they've just changed the cutoff.
Yeah.
So the standards we're teaching, so Jen is right, like, like at the middle school the other day, we looked at some of the, the standards of where they did well and didn't do well by grade level, different subjects. So we'll still have that information, but there's going to be much less item, items released. And it's really, I think Jen said it the best, to have changed the cutoffs on the test.
But for what reason, did they explain why? So what they, the two things that they have said to us, first is that these are better aligned with NAEP, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress, where only 50% of our students are meeting benchmark, which, which, right? And then the second is that, again, the desire for students to be college and career-ready, that many of our kids are passing MCAS and then need remedial support in high, in college. So this idea is a clear signal of readiness beyond. And then again, the same language around critical thinking and all of that, so.
And they believe that a test is going to make you college-ready and career-ready, they're really focused on that.
That was another, that was another concern I had, is that if this felt like this was a more authentic measure of student, of, you know, of students' achievement, yet this test doesn't seem that much more authentic in terms of than what we've seen in the past. Is that, would you say that's fair, Mr. Gilligan?
I think that's very fair, and I think if any type of indication, Commissioner Wilson from DESI the other day, what he said is, when eventually we get to this new test at the high school level, and they think it's going to be 19 or 20, they're not sure yet, this bold datesman, they said in the first two years of that testing, they will set the cutoff to keep the same percentages of the people passing the test for those first two years for the graduation requirement, so that those percentages stay the same.
I don't need to say this, but please keep asking why.
Yes. So I, I will warn the school committee here that I did have an extensive conversation with the Boston Globe today. Tom Scott recommended that I talk to them. I think for a number of reasons. One, I'm, I understand the statistical component of this. And two, I'm, I'm leaving the superintendency, so might be able to be a little more frank than others. So I will let you know that if you look on the Boston Globe tomorrow and, and see yours truly, it was my attempt to thoughtfully say exactly what I've just said to you.
You being frank is not an issue.
But just want to let my school committee know.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, so now let's go to North Andover. And as you can, as you can imagine, every single one of our grades, except for obviously 10th grade, has gone down. We remain above the state average in every place within our district averages are above third, fourth, fifth, sixth. This is, in front of you here is ELA. And you could see every one, this was the old advanced proficient, now meets and exceeds in ELA. The one thing you can see is we continued, we leveled, we actually went up one percentage report point in 10th grade, because again, that's the legacy test.
And all the legacy tests are paper tests?
Yes, as of now. But what's interesting is the red line for 2017, it's flat for all of us, so why is that? Because, remember, last year, we did not get state averages, because half the state took Park and half the state, state took MCAS. So we had to put a little, we had, in order to have the line continue, we had to make up a number for last year. And we just made up whatever it was this year. So it's actually a smooth line between those two.
Right, right.
But remember last year, we got no, remember last year, I said, "I'm sorry, I can't really talk about how we compare to the state, because we're getting no state averages."
Only 28% took MCAS.
Because it looks like we're going like this, but the state's going like that, so it doesn't send a very good message. But that's the great, 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 great question. All right, again, and then the same in terms of mathematics. You can see that we did, you know, above the state average in all areas. Most grades went down. You'll also see, you'll actually see a significant increase actually in mathematics for us in 10th grade. So we can work on smoothing out those curves. No, I just, didn't know if it told some story. So a few things that I actually would really like us to look at, and this is where the only way we can really even compare apples to oranges, and that's really where we're at, is looking at student growth percentiles. And I thought it would be helpful for, for you to see that our median student growth percentiles in ELA, if you look across, was 55. Now remember, the state assumes 50 as median growth. 55 is actually statistically significantly above average, and 55 is a, is a good number. 61% of our students across the different grades met or exceeded expectations, which is 12 percentage points above the state average. So you can see the state average is 50 on student growth and 49%. You can look at the different grades, and I will highlight to you that we are already investigating ELA in sixth grade. That is obviously a concern to us with a 43 SGP. Every other SGP is above in ELA 50, which, sorry, other than, yes, other than grade 10, which is 49. But that's up from 40, so. But we're, but everyone else is above. I just, this, want to remind you, two things to call out. The 69 in 7th grade is quite impressive. When you start getting up into the upper 60s, that's almost unheard of.
Yeah, so in the old category, if you can get 51 growth, that's on target. If you go above 60, it's like break out the champagne and celebrate.
Right. So that's exciting to see, and then also in 5th grade, to see that type of growth. So again, above the state average, 61% across the district compared to 49, and a median SGP of 55 is really quite good. I'll show you how we compare to other communities in a minute. Math is actually even better. We have a median student growth in math last year of 60. As you will see, that's the second highest of our comparable districts. That's an actually incredible, that's just pretty exciting for us. Again, this implementation of applied math and science in 7th grade, student growth of 79, 80, and 79, you know, you know, you want to talk about the impact of that decision, that's incredible. We've seen that now.
Can I, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, year after year, it continues.
It's incredible.
Right, I mean, are other communities looking at that number and then saying, literally picking up the phone and saying, "What are you doing in 7th grade?"
They should be.
Okay, so the second question is, why is it dropping so much in eighth?
Yeah, so I will tell you, that's a question we asked last year, if you remember, and it was at 36, and they got it up to 51. It's been a lot of work on the 8th grade, really trying to say, "Look, if kids are making this progress, then it's going back down." It was a significant concern we had last year.
Right.
And 51 is on target, so the fact that they're moving up and then staying on target would be okay. 39 was, 6 was not okay last year.
Right, but it's still a drop-off.
Yeah, but 51.5, which means that they're still growing at the, at the rate they would assume. So the previous year, their scores moved up, and then compared to the kids they had in that year and their scores there, they're growing at the same rate. So that actually would be good, you know, they made a jump.
A little bit, right.
Again, they're getting a double dose, so leveling out would be completely okay. The concern was it was dipping back down.
Right.
Which we're not seeing this year. So again, a median student growth of 60 in a district across grades three through eight is good. It's actually really good. So, and again, then we were at 61% of meeting and exceeding compared to 48% in the state. So just a few things I wanted to just, I just kind of called this out to say, okay, yes, we're at 61%. Now that's down from 77%. I mean, in some cases, 70, I think it was ELA was 77 to 61. We're dropping 16 percentage points from the advanced proficient to the meeting exceeding, no surprise, that's what the state, it's what's happening. Yet, we are doing better than the state average. And then the last page is some work we did very quickly over the last few days. And I just want us to look at the next generation numbers here. If you look at this, you'll see, are, these are the comparable communities that we have long time.
I can't read it here, either.
Oh, you can't read it?
I can read it there, it's fine.
There, it's better, thank you, much better.
So in math, let's just look at math. So you'll see that our student growth on the right in mathematics, North Andover is the second highest of all of the comparable communities, right? The only one ahead of us is Natick. That, that's really quite impressive, especially because if you look to the left, we're achieving at the top third or so, right? So our average scaled score was 506.4, which is above a number of communities. And the fact that we were closer to the top and had the highest growth, one of the highest growths, is pretty exciting, right? Because growth is about moving up. So that, and then again, in ELA, our, we are close to the top. I think we are, we're tied for fourth, as you can see there. And our ELA was, our average scale score was 505.4, which is, which is quite good. You know, I, I just want to point out, and I, and I don't mean to pick on our, on the other Andover, but if you look at the growth there for those guys, I mean, we are growing at a, at a pretty good rate and clip compared to a lot of the schools that we often compare ourselves to.
Can you, I, I know you've probably talked about this a million times, but can you just remind me how it is we decide which communities to compare ourselves to?
Yeah, so this was a long conversation prior to my arrival about what our comparable communities are. And I will just tell you, I adopted those in an effort to not spend a huge amount of time on it.
I wasn't hearing that.
Yeah, this was actually before me as well. I think, and Mr. Gilligan, you remember.
I have some institutional knowledge.
I, I think it goes back like a solid, probably 10 to 15 years, and they tried to find demographics that really kind of mirrored ours and lots of, and somewhat came up with these. And obviously, you know, some are north shore, some are a little bit south shore, I mean, and they have kind of been where we have just kind of benchmarks ourselves. You know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't maybe reshuffle the deck, but it's where we've kind of done for 10, 15 years, I'd say.
It may not be a project for this year, but, you know, at some point, we may want to think about whether or not these are still the communities we want to.
Can we put it on the December 7th meeting?
So Dr. Ormsby actually. I think this goes back, Andrew, I think this goes back to Dr. Ormsby.
Yes.
And the, the one thing that, that Jen and I have showed you over the past couple of years too, is our DART communities.
Yes.
So the state has a tool called DART, and they actually pick the communities that are similar to North Andover demographics, racial makeup, socioeconomics, all these different factors. And oftentimes, many of these aren't in that.
They are in that.
Are not.
Are not.
They're happy to show that, it's not quite available yet, though.
And the demographics have, have changed in town over the last 10 or 12 years, quite a bit, so.
And the other communities as well.
Again, I mean, not, not a project for right now, but I was just.
I think she's volunteering.
David, it's punishment.
I'm wondering if you could speak just for a minute or so. I mean, it really look, and you may not have the data and may not know it, and that's perfectly fine. But when I look at, you know, Milton, who's number one, right, they're 508.4, we're 506.4, right? That's a two-point difference. So like, what's really the spread out there, right?
So we don't really know that yet.
Okay.
I mean, we, literally, we just got these scores and I.
The top score is 560.
Yeah.
And what's the bottom?
But no one has an average of 560.
No, no.
It's the top. I don't know.
No, but that's the top score, so, I mean, I can't see, this is probably representative of most suburbs.
I looked at Newton's, it was more, it was like 510.
Okay.
So again, I haven't looked at every community.
Right. But I was just trying to bet, like, figure out, like.
But it's going to be really hard for us to say, oh, we're .1 behind Natick. Does that mean anything? Who knows?
I don't know.
Right.
Yeah.
So we just don't know that yet.
But, right, but if you told me that, you know, the top performing schools that were out there were 570, right? And, and, and we're at 506, like, that's a little bit weird. Even though our growth percentile is 60, I then want to see, okay, if they're at 570, right, what's their growth percentile like? Is it 99?
Yeah, they did, they published it yesterday with just every district. I, I mean, I can tell you, I looked at Newton's, it was 510 and 512, I think. So you're not talking that we're that far, and I'm not saying that they're the top, I just happen to know that, because I live there. But it's normally one of the top, top performing districts. So, you know, and again, I, I have no idea, I mean, what this means yet, because this is just so new to our conversation.
But the growth part is encouraging.
Right.
Yeah.
So they still use like level-one schools, level-two schools?
So they did not, they did not create, high schools got leveled, we remained at level two. But what, remember, they were held harmless this year, so they have not leveled any of the three through, anything up to high school. They've, no levels associated.
I really don't, I mean, personally, I don't really care too much about those labels.
Right.
I, I'd like just to see us not focus so much. I mean, if your kid's not doing well in school, who cares if you're on a level-one school?
Right, exactly.
People worry about what their own kids are doing.
Yeah.
I know some of our principals like to brag about their, their status, I'd like to, like to.
We are held harmless this year. Okay, so I just wanted to show you. Okay, so I just wanted to show you the high school real quick, just so you can see it. Again, this is the legacy test, so it'll look different. It's the percentage advanced and proficient. See, the challenge with this is, you know, at this point, the percentages get very high, right? So, we're at 89% advanced or proficient in mathematics. That's actually an increase of, I think, three percentage points. And our growth is 53. If you remember lat, when I, when, the first year, I think our growth was.
We argued about this the other day.
Median SGP was in the 30s.
Yeah, I think it was 36.5.
36, no, it was 37, I said 38.5, you said 36.5, it was actually 37.5. So, this is the stuff that happens in central office. Are you worried that we're having arguments over our memory? That's exciting for us in, in North Andover. Last year, it went to 51, now it's up to 53. We've seen a significant increase in the growth, and also the percentage advanced proficient in mathematics. It's exciting for us.
Well, you reshuffled the math department.
We did reshuffle the math department pretty significantly. So it's exciting to see, again, our work and our changes having an impact. ELA, 95% of our students were advanced and proficient. At this point, five, you know, it's, it's getting close to the top here, right? Again, this was, this is the old, was the goal poster in the same place on this test, right? And then you'll see that our, our SGP was 49. That's up from 40 last year, and we're, and we're moving to try to understand and figure that out. It's close to 50. Could it be stronger? We do believe it could be stronger. And Mr. Jackson will be addressing that when he comes.
And couldn't that, some of that be based on also what is done in the middle school to get them ready?
Right, and it's hard, when you're talking about 95% of the kids being advanced and proficient, growth gets tricky too, right? I mean, at some point, you tap out. I, I will again, just ask you to look, I mean, you can see Andover has got 97% advanced and proficient, and they've got a 30 growth. So is that a result of that it just gets hard?
Right.
Right. It's interesting too, I mean, if you go back a slide, you know, you know, how some of the communities just quickly eyeballing a couple of places that I'm pretty familiar with, their growth was really high, or higher in this test than, than new next gen, and significantly lower than the old one.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it was just.
It's hard to know what to think of it.
Yeah, like, I mean, you're, I mean, you're comparing things so completely differently.
But I would say, you know, as we look at this, and we'll dig down into each school, if we look at this from kind of the district level, there's actually, there's a few places that are concerning. I think we've highlighted those. We're concerned about seventh, 6th grade ELA, we're a little concerned about 10th grade ELA. But there's also some really exciting work. I think our mathematics numbers across the board are, are quite impressive with a median SGP of 60, and then moving pretty significantly at the high school. So there's some areas of celebration, there's some areas of concern, but I think in general, as we try to make sense of this new test, I think we're moving in the right direction. I mean, as you look at this, although the, the goalposts have changed, I think we're still marching down the field. So, you know, that was our, our initial look at this.
So when will families get their, their student scores?
Yeah, so that, we get the information on October 24th.
Okay.
I am in the process of crafting a letter. I will send it to you guys for review before we send it out, to try to help explain this to parents. There's one that's coming from the commissioner that tries to help explain. The principals and I and central office staff met, and we felt that it might be helpful for me to first try to help explain, so that it comes from me and maybe potentially a little bit more accessible language. And then we will send that out. So I would assume end of October, right beginning of November.
So they come by UPS, and we have to actually stuff envelopes and.
And send them out. I'm, I'm wondering if we, obviously, we're going to talk about this again.
Yep.
November 16th. I'm, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if at some point, it will be helpful to have more of a community meeting about this?
So, our principals in the letter that I'm going to send back are going to do meetings at each of their schools.
Thank you.
As part of the PTOs.
I think that's really important.
It doesn't really make sense to do this district-wide, because you've got a different story at the high school. It's a different test.
Right.
Than you have at the middle school, that you have in each elementary school, frankly, has a different story to tell.
Yeah. I just think that FaceTime can, can be really helpful. I mean, it's really helpful to me to sit here and listen to what you have to say. I got these, I looked at them.
Yes.
You know, telling the story is helpful.
Yeah, so we, that's the plan.
That's good.
But, you know, again, you're hearing about this in the media. I wanted to frame it at the state level, but then also give you some context in North Andover, where although some may be causing major alarm bells, I, I just don't think that's the reality within our district. Across the district. There are some areas of concern, and there's some areas of celebration.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for that. I agree with Ms. Picard that that could be quite dazzling to look at by yourself on your computer.
Yeah.
I think it's important to also just highlight, it's one data point. I mean, it's not anything that anybody should be stressing.
And the fact that you're using map tests, other things to direct individual performances helpful in the individual growth. Public comment? Seeing none as well. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session to discuss strategy regarding negotiations with the North Andover Teachers Assistance Association, Administrative Assistance Association.
Someone?
Mr. McDevitt.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vitski Lynch. All in favor, or do I have to roll call that?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Trissy.
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt. Ms. Picard.
Yes.
Ms. Vitski Lynch. Ms. Maybley, yes. And we will not be returning to open session. Thank you. May I adjourn? Are moving, moving.